All right, I'm going to call to order the March 30th, 2020 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to order. Mayor Mike Fournier. As you can tell, we are moving in a different direction tonight for tonight's City Commission Meeting. We appreciate everybody tuning in. We appreciate your patience. We appreciate your patience if, for some reason, we have any technical difficulty. This meeting is being recorded. It is being streamed on WROK, so everyone can view it. Today, you can see that we have a full participation of our Commissioner, City Manager. And we're all participating in this meeting via the comfort and convenience and safety of our remote locations, most of which is our homes. Before we begin, I do want to provide a brief update on the COVID-19 situation in Royal Oak. As of today, for those of you who are aware, Oakland County has now begun publishing the number of contracted cases of COVID-19 by zip code. For the two zip codes in Royal Oak, we have unfortunately 57 people that have tested positive in our city. We can't underscore enough the importance of social distancing in our community. This means, you know, staying a minimum of six feet from each other and following all the orders given by the county executive as well as the governor. Together, we're going to fight this terrible disease, and we need everyone's participation in doing so. For more information about what the city operations are doing as it relates to some pertinent information in our community, social media, our Facebook page for the City of Royal Oak, as well as our website, contains information that is helpful for you if you have any questions or inquiries. All city employees, still, their emails are working, our telephones are working, so please give us a call if you have additional questions. We have links to the appropriate state, federal, and of course, Royal Oak site there to inform you of what's transpiring with COVID-19. Another thing that we encourage everybody to do is to sign up for the Notify Me application that we have. You can put in your phone number, you can put in your email. And the city, whether it's on COVID-19 or any other myriad of issues related to the city, you have direct contact from the city on anything of interest, and we can continue to keep you apprised not just of what's happening in the community, but also in the event of any type of emergency occurring. We highly encourage every resident to take advantage of that. If you go to our www.romy.gov, you can see Notify Me right at the top. Click on that. It's very easy to use and sign up for. I know Royal Oak, you know, we've made a lot of changes over the last couple of weeks. We're encouraged by what we're seeing with people supporting some of our small businesses. The county executive, Dave Holter, did announce, and we are working directly with the county right now on some of the small business grants of relief and support. Todd Fenton and his office are working to help our small businesses navigate through this storm. If you are a small business, I highly encourage you to reach out to our Department of Economic Development so we can help explain to you some of the things that are afforded to our businesses in Royal Oak through the federal, state, and county government. I'd also want to take a moment here to recognize the passing of a Royal Oak resident, Stephanie Comtois. Stephanie was an active member of our community. She was active in our Parks and Rec Committee, our Senior Task Force. She was a docent at the Detroit Zoo. She was a big supporter of our police department. She passed away this week due to complications from a long-going illness. Our hearts go out to Mark, her husband, and the Comtois family during this tragic time. So if you can just give a minute here to recognize Stephanie, we'd appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you to Stephanie for everything that she's done for our community, for Mark, for everything he does, and for all the volunteers in our great community. Before we commence the rest of the agenda, as a formality, I'd like to go through and do a roll call vote, or not a roll call vote, I'm sorry, to do a roll call attendance here who's with us here today to get it on record, since all of us are participating remotely. I'd like to start with Commissioner Sharlin Douglas.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pat Peruge.
Here.
Commissioner Melanie Mace.
Here.
Commissioner Randy LaVassar.
Here.
Commissioner Kyle Dubach.
Here.
Commissioner Kim Gitts.
I am here.
Okay, thank you. And of course, Mike Fournier, Mayor of Royal Oak, is here present as well. Next on our agenda is the invocation. The crisis we face is serious, and like anything we've witnessed in our lifetime, is during this most challenging time that we reach deep into our soul and rely on our values to persevere. We must rise to the occasion and turn panic into preparation, anxiety into action, fear into focus, and uncertainty into unity. Prescription to overcome this crisis starts with one part hope, one part determination, and unlimited parts love. The love and unity of Royal Oak is on full display. Neighbors looking after neighbors, volunteers collecting essentials for those in need, people sewing masks, people feeding our healthcare workers, encouraging messages written on the sidewalks of our neighborhoods, windows decorated with uplifting displays of encouragement. The love we see gives us hope. The hope gives us determination. We know we will rise from the rubble and rebuild our way of life better, stronger, and more united than ever before. The darkest days aren't over. We pray that public officials and community leaders will rise to unite the world. We pray they will listen to science, reason, and prioritize public health among all other priorities. We pray for those on the front lines combating this virus. We offer our deepest gratitude for all those who work to keep us fed and our essentials flowing. We pray for the safety of our healthcare workers and first responders who selflessly put others before their own need. Finally, we pray for all those who have been afflicted by this terrible disease, for those who have died, for those who suffer, and for those who have tragically lost their loved ones. Let us remain strong, hopeful, determined, and compassionate throughout this struggle. Amen. I'll ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, this brings us to item number five on the agenda tonight, public comment. Unlike normal commission meetings, we took and opened up a phone line for people to call in their public comment. We felt that this was the most appropriate way so people's voices could be heard versus simply just writing an email or filling out a comment card. When we're ready, we will play the audio of the, I think we had six public comments submitted tonight, so. Do you hear that? Command?
Hello, my name is Frankie Gross, and I'm the Director of Justice Center's Autism Connections Program. On behalf of our Board of Trustees, staff, and the children and families we serve, we thank you for recognizing Justice Center during Autism Awareness Month this April. The things both the people I can't say now is fourth because the Justice Center is obligated to bring awareness and advocacy for families who have a loved one with an autism diagnosis and encourage our community to learn this time and to figure out how to handle autism. Justice Center has been meeting the needs of our communities over the years to have five more programs, child and family services, disability services, behavioral health, integrated health care, and autism services. Our Autism Connections Program is unique, putting one of the longest-running providers of autism services in southeast Michigan. We offer comprehensive services such as applied behavior nemesis or ABA therapy for individuals with an autism diagnosis, and support services such as counseling, parent support group, kids' nighting, summer programs for family members. We provide a continuum of care, starting with early intervention scale for adolescents to months. After this greatly needed transition, we have a list of adolescents to be dealt up to age 21. We thank the city of Royal Oak for being a partner with listening to us to bring our business to life. Thank you.
Oh, Patrick McGee, 424 Ouniverse Avenue, had a question about this economic consent agenda, item G, approval of contract maturation of the Oaks Park versus follows from the March 11, 2019 City Commission that it was a settlement. There's no additional cost due to the interlocal agreement with Norman Oaks, and was just curious where this additional contract maturation and why there's an additional cost associated with this. Just appreciate a quick discussion on this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tom Regan. I live at 3126 Landview, and I was just calling in and encouraging the city to consider a really aggressive community garden effort, you know, identify public land, you know, at the city and the school district that could be used for community gardens. And, you know, these kind of gardens can be very significant, with the victory gardens back in World War II produced about 40% of fruits and vegetables in the country at their peak. So that means significant. And I think every country sees explosion of vegetable gardening during crises, which is already happening. Now, I suspect there are a lot of people locally who would get involved if they had some land, you know, a lot of places in the state where this doesn't happen because of the oak trees or just because there are people living in apartments or whatever. And another thing to consider is we're likely to see interruptions in our vegetable supply this year. I'm not sure that it's agricultural labor, you know, not just the racism and xenophobia of Trump, but combined with that, with the virus, a lot of these workers live in crowded, unsanitary conditions, and the virus is going to make them, either too sick to work or too scared to put themselves in that situation, or they're going to die, and there's not going to be anybody that picked crops. So having community gardens locally would help fill that gap. And, I mean, it's really not a big deal for the city to just make available some land that gets a lot of sun, if it's compacted, you know, like land that uses for all the full parking, you could top it off with compost, and it would be workable. It would help if you scraped the grass off it, and there's a factor to do that, and leave some piles of compost nearby. You know, to what extent we can make some water available, either from hoses or else, through standing rain barrels or whatever. But I think an aggressive community garden effort would be something that would benefit Royal Oak.
This is Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, Royal Oak. I've got two or three things to talk about. Number one, what is the status of the retirement, and what are the fund managers doing to protect the fund balance? The goal was a 7% return. That is not achievable without risk. It's outdropped 34%. It would take a 52% increase to get back to where it was. Secondly, the current concern is to maintain patronage of the restaurants and steroids. However, the downtown manager and the DVA should be planning a campaign to promote the entire downtown, including retail, once the Chinese virus scare is over. Remember, retail is totally out of business until the scare is over. Third, we should also consider canceling art and beauty. It is historically detrimental to retail. And finally, just a comment, I have reduced my rents to a dollar per month. I hope that the commission, downtown manager, and the DVA will do your part to restore the vitalization of downtown business. Thank you. This is Bill Harrison.
Hi, my name is Robert Bussamie, and I am leaving a comment for item number H for the agenda to make approval of license agreement for 1412 East 11 Mile Road, which is one of us participating for Robert Bruce Photography. And, you know, I went through all the paperwork as you guys requested, and the engineering department drew up the plans, and we have everything set, and I appreciate all the time that you guys put into this for me. And we end the document, have it notarized by the city clerk, and it is, should be on your desk for tonight's meeting, for signature, and it's real. We have our business a lot, we do get those bad winter storms and sort of gray in front of the building is fractured, we can at least avoid further damage by using this temporary solution. And our intentions are to only put it up, bring, you know, bad snow, you know, snow accumulation to avoid the damage that we've talked about in other meetings. But I really appreciate all you guys' time, and I hope everyone's fixed and that we can all get back to work really soon. And thank you very much, and I appreciate your submissions on this item. Thanks in the dance. And again, my name is Robert Bruce Photography. This is my first time doing this, though. It was a little awkward, but grateful in the same sense. Thanks, Mike.
Commission members, this is Chester Stempian, architect representing the owners of a building at 915 South Main that once was a dry cleaner but has been closed for some time. The proposal for this building is to completely remodel the structure. The laying for tenant is to be terminated, but it could be a retailer or a property. Proposal is to add a second floor apartment using the blue floor footprint for the tradition. Unfortunately, this building footprint sets a little over foot onto city property, which was only discovered when we double-checked the measures on the site. Visually, it seems like the building is really set back about two feet from the public law that is just being feet wide at this location. Each side of this property is a parking lot, and each parking lot extends about two feet onto public property. In fact, the south parking lot contains ballers and a chairman's bedroom that is on city property. Prior to submitting a report for a building permit, a meeting was arranged with William Main and his Royal Oak engineering staff who reviewed our existing site condition. The conclusion was that this is a pre-existing condition, and as long as we did not compound this situation with any further encroachment, this department would approve maintaining this protrusion. Their authority for approval could only be obtained, though, after community development approval. Engineering, to cut back the parafront first floor pavement, only to construct it, would be quite an endeavor that we're hoping to avoid. For seeing no health, welfare, and safety issues to this building that has been in place for over 50 years, we are asking the commission to look favorably on our request. Thank you.
I believe that concludes the public comment for this evening. All right, this brings us to item number six, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Okay, I see a motion by Commissioner Macy and a second by Commissioner Dubach. Remember to unmute if there's any discussion. You can raise your hand digitally. Any discussion? Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hand. If I'm missing you, wave your hand. Okay? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Which item is number?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Okay, I vote aye. I forgot to vote while I was trying to count the votes. All right, so it's unanimously passed, the approval of the agenda. Any disagreements with the unanimous passage? Just want to make sure this is a kind of our first vote here, that we got everything digitally. Okay? All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. I'm aware that Commissioner Macy wishes to bring item J off the agenda to discuss. Does anyone else wish to bring something off the consent agenda to discuss? Commissioner LaVassar?
During public comment, someone asked about item G, so I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification on item G before we proceed on that.
Okay, we have J and G. Anybody else? Okay. All right, the consent agenda now consists of the City Commission Special Meeting, Executive Search Second Interviews Minutes from March 12, 2020, City Commission Meeting Minutes from March 16, proclamation designating April as Autism Awareness Month, claims March 24th to 27th, 2020, approval of purchase orders, approval of interlocal agreement with Madison Heights for use of police department gun range, approval of license agreement, 1412 East 11 Mile Road, this is Robert Bruce Photography, resolution designating April as Fair Housing Month, proclamation designating April 22nd, 2020 as Earth Day in Royal Oak, request for authorization to increase the purchase order for Convergent Technology Partners Royal Oak Civic Center project, and receive and file the non-action items, which are the February 2020 Investment Report and the Normandy Oaks Park Update. Is there a motion? Okay, I see a motion by Commissioner Macy. I did see a second by Commissioner Dubach on that case. Any discussion on the consent agenda as presented? Okay, I see nobody raising their hand digitally or physically, so I'll call for the vote. Please unmute your mic. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, unanimous vote on the consent agenda as presented. This brings us to item J, formally on the consent agenda. Commissioner Macy.
Happy to go. Is item G first?
Okay, we can do item G if that works.
I don't care, but I just thought we normally do it alphabetically, but I'm happy to go.
Okay. All right, how about you go, and then Commissioner LaVassar will go in.
Okay, so item J is the approval of the CDBG fund recommendation for this upcoming year. I was surprised when I read it. We've had fairly extensive discussions in the Parks and Rec and Senior Advisory Board about this. There were several meetings that we had, public comment, we had people send emails, and the areas of issue that we talked a lot about were the parks, of course, and there's Lawson Park and Franklin Park. And Lawson Park is largely an open field, there is some other things there, and there's a volleyball court and a baseball field that are not in great repair. And at the top and bottom of the park, of Lawson Park, is a diverter, an incomplete roadway, so there's a partial unpaved road at the top and bottom of Lawson. Going into this, we were recommended by city staff that one of the improvements we could make would be to pave those two diverters. Frankly, I thought that that was going to be the most popular thing from, that we would hear about from residents, is getting that paved. Being able to use CDBG money for paving roads is a really good, great boon for those neighborhoods. Paving roads is quite expensive, and often the burden of the cost falls on the neighboring residents. So I was quite surprised in our public comment, we had very robust public comment. We actually met in City Commission chambers in December, and there was quite a lot of people there, and they came forward, and nobody wanted those, the top and the bottom paved. It was fairly unanimous. I think some people were indifferent, but most people specifically said they didn't want it. It would not be useful to them, they didn't want the additional parking, and it was kind of additional park space for them as it was in the unpaved condition. So I was surprised to find that, but it freed up quite a lot of money for other improvements that could be made to the park, and there were a lot of suggestions that people had for things that we could do. And we recommended at the end that neither of those places be paved, and we had a whole fairly deep list of things that we could be adding to both of these parks with the CDBG money. So I was quite surprised to see that the recommendation that came through was to have these both paved. I'm curious to hear how exactly that came about, and I say that I'm, my feeling right now is I'm going to vote against this. This seems to be exactly what the residents don't want, and the CD region money is not for that.
Commissioner Peruge?
The Rehabilitation Board of Appeals is the board that typically handles the recommendations by the CDBG funds for each calendar year. This year, because meetings were canceled, we didn't have a final meeting about that to make a recommendation. But we did have a meeting prior to our early March meeting where we had a public hearing as well. And there were about a handful, perhaps they have a dozen residents, who were so cool about the parking issue at Lawson Park. And there are not only no desire for it, because they think that there is enough people who actually walk to the park, there isn't that much vehicle traffic to the park. And also, they were concerned about people gathering overnight and so on and so forth, vandalism and so on and so forth. And so there really wasn't a strong element there from the neighborhood as well that wanted the parking. Subsequently to that, I've had some conversations with people in the Lawson Park Homesteaders Association about just a very limited amount of parking in that area at one end, probably at the best place, up at the north end, that north cut-off area, so that we can put in some paved handicap parking. There really is no handicap parking around that park, and it's large enough so that there's equipment there that would be easily accessible for people in wheelchairs. There's going to be, if the plans of the Parks and Recreation Commission recommend it go through, there will be walking paths and other things up to a lot of the play equipment and just around the park in general that is paved or with, so that people who have mobility issues with a wheelchair or walker or whatever would be easily able to get around the park. So my recommendation would be not necessarily to include this recommendation from the staff, which is where this came from, because the Rehabilitation Board was not able, needed and able to make a recommendation, but also to at least pave enough of an area so that we could have a couple of handicap spots with the width that is wide enough for easily be accessible wheelchair or van access, that kind of thing. That's what I would prefer as a compromise, just because I think that it would enhance the visibility of the park, it would get any kind of handicap access off the street, which I think is much safer. I don't think you need to have all of those trips paved, they're pretty good-sized, but I think having maybe one or two or three handicap parking spaces in the paved area makes a great deal of sense.
Commissioner Macy?
Thank you for that explanation. That helps make some sense of it. So two things. One is that I think I would actually prefer, and I'm basing this on what the residents said, that the bottom part of Lawson rather than the top be the part that was paved. When we talked about how those two areas were used, it seemed like the bottom part was, there was not much use, and the, I think the houses face away from it, whereas on the top, the houses face toward that place, and so they kind of use it as a, they use it as a walking across. So it seemed like the bottom spot might be better for that. But I also want to say that after all the public comment that we got, which was, like I said, quite a lot, to those residents to find out that they gave us all this input and what we did was like, okay, that's nice, we're going to pave it anyway, without giving them any explanation, I find problematic. So I wish there had been some other way, because we invited them because we were considering this to come talk to us, and they did, and it looked like we responded. So I wish there was some other way to inform them that, okay, now we're really thinking about doing this. Do you have anything to say? We need handicap parking in this area. Yeah.
Commissioner Peruge?
I think by approving these overall budget tonight sends the request to the federal government and to HUD to actually allocate these funds for the city, for these specific projects. As I understand, the way the Lawson Park project is designed, is described in the application that's attached, it's not so specific that it says, well, we're going to do this paving here, but maybe not the paving there. It just includes the overall improvement to the park. So my, my point is that I think we can approve this tonight acknowledging that we have some issues with the whole issue of paving, and that's an issue that as we go forward with the design of the park, with all of the neighborhood involvement, we can work out if we do want to do handicap parking, where is the best place for it, how large it should be, and so on and so forth. I don't think that objection to that one specific element of the park design is a way, is, 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 means that we just turn this down. I think we can go forward with planning and more design work going forward, but this at least gets us... but this at least gets us in the trap to get the money in hand so that we can do all of these things.
Tim Twing has raised his hand, I want him to chime in here, Mr. Twing. There we go.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening?
We can hear you.
All right, good. No, I think both commissioners have outlined my recollection of what occurred. Joseph Murphy from my office attended both of those meetings, the Park and Rec Board as well as the Rehab Board and the recommendations that were in there from both boards or the lack thereof because the Rehab Board wasn't able to meet. It still was staff's recommendation and that's how we tried to break them out following city policy to pave dirt roads and to move forward. Obviously, if the commission wants to not pave either of those two roads, that's fine with staff. We have not designed the park yet or the park equipment. The real question for clarity tonight would be if you don't want to pave them, that's fine, I would make that clear. And if you want to add parking somewhere, we could do that as well when we get into the design of the actual park. We have here allocated a million three to the south end diverters and to the parks. Our estimate at the beginning was it was going to be about $300,000 to pave those roads. So we'd need something left to pave a parking lot, but I think Commissioner Perush hit it on the head is we can allocate these monies, but I would like a clear indication that you don't want the roads paved.
And they can make that in form of the motion when they move forward.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy, your hand still up?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Twing. So, Mr. Twing, that 1.3 million that's set aside for this, if we say we're not interested in having those roads paved, but we are interested in parking there, would that free up that 0.3 or would that 0.3 go away? Or if we approve it as it is, as Commissioner Perush suggested, would that money just be something that we could still move around when it comes time to it? Or are we dedicating that 300,000 to the paving?
Well, the 1.3 million included all of the estimates for park equipment, improvements to the baseball field, the tennis, the volleyball, installation of fitness equipment, play equipment. So the 1.3 million included all of those elements that still need to be designed and allocated and based on it. We estimated that paving the roads was going to be 300,000 of that number. So you could leave it there and perhaps if another project's identified in the year, during the year, we could do an amendment to it. I don't have another project at this time to assign the balance of that money to. It would probably get shifted down to unprogrammed fund contingencies, which is listed at 126,000 right now. But I don't know how big a paved area if we're talking, you know, two handicap spots, are we going to pave part of the road to get to them or are we just going to pave part of them? So I wouldn't want to move more than, say, 200,000 of it to that contingency. Leave us 100,000 to design and pave the parking area.
So Mr. Twing, what I hear, just to recapitulate, is that, you know, if we move forward with this item tonight with a motion, but also providing clarity to you regarding the commission's preference related to the paving or and/or installation of handicap parking spots in the area, that that isn't going to leave, you know, 300,000 of the CDBG funds unclaimed for other purposes, that in fact, we'll still be able to continue to move forward with this project, still to the final plan, does it relate to the concerns addressed by Commissioner Perush, Commissioner Macy? And if there's anything that's left over in that unassigned bucket that there is use for in the city, either be a contingency or other project that we can identify, correct?
That's correct. And keep in mind too that 1.3 million includes enhancement to those six diverters that are down there as well that need to be designed, so.
Any other questions, Commissioner Macy? Want to maybe do a motion, Commissioner Perush, Commissioner Macy, that kind of clarifies those points?
Okay. I move approval of this with the adjustment of moving, at Mr. Twing's discretion, approximately $200,000 to the contingency fund and directing staff that we are not interested in the paving of the area around Lawson, other than for to create some additional parking.
Commissioner Perush, you had your hand up, was that a second or was that a comment?
It's a second and the only comment that I would add is when Commissioner Macy just made her motion and she said parking, I guess I would want to be more specific as to handicap parking. Can that be a friendly amendment to your motion? She said-
Yeah, fair enough, I think. For clarity purposes, when you said parking, did you mean handicap parking?
Yeah, sorry, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, I don't see any digital hands or physical hands waving in the air. So if you could all unmute your microphones, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Commissioner Gibbs, I noticed that your microphone was not unmuted. Can you clarify your vote please for the record? Commissioner Gibbs? I'll unmute you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
I agree.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure every, you know, we get it, so in case you're saying something. So if you have problems with unmuting, let me know, I can unmute you. Which means I can also mute you, so I guess it goes both ways. All right. This brings us to G, on the consent agenda, Commissioner Labasser.
I don't have a whole lot of questions here. There was simply a member of the public who had some questions with regard to this. If I'm understanding this, there's some additional work that we had not planned to do right away that we now have the finances available to do and if Erin could confirm that, I suspect that's the reason for the modification.
Okay, Mr. Phillipsky?
Yes, you have that correct. All of these expenses are reimbursable under one of two grants.
Okay. All right, so basically it's, you know, it's simply we're doing a few things that we're planning to put on hold because some grant funds came available that we didn't necessarily anticipate. The idea is to move forward on those now and that requires some additional engineering services, if I'm understanding correctly. Is that accurate?
Yeah, you have that exactly correct, Commissioner Labasser.
Thank you.
Yeah, I see Commissioner Douglas has their hand raised.
Yes, just to be even more specific, there's only one park plan, but it has two phases and our initial funds would have enabled us to do phase one. Now these new grants are enabling to do part of phase two, but it's really all one plan.
That's correct. All of these things were all considered part of the plan and would have been funded entirely by the city had it not been for the Oakland County Grant, which allowed us to expedite some of those phase two items.
Anyone wish to make a motion? Okay, I see Commissioner Douglas moves, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion? Okay, with none. Everyone unmute your microphone, please. I'm going to call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. That gets us through the balance of the consent agenda, which brings us to item number eight, the approval of macro maintenance agreement and addendum. Mr. Kirby? See, Mr. Kirby, let me unmute you, Mr. Kirby. Okay, Mr. Kirby, can you hear us now? Mr. Kirby? All right, we might be having a technical difficulty here. Are there any objections by the commission if we move to item nine? Until Mr. Kirby can join us? Okay, I don't see any strong objections, so we will go on to item number nine, which is the request for license agreement to maintain encroachment right of way 915 South Washington Avenue. Mr. Gillum?
I'll take that one, if that's okay. This is true.
Sure, no problem.
Yes, you do have a request for a license agreement at 915 South Washington. I believe it was also one of the gentlemen that called in earlier during public comment was the architect for the project. This project is in the mixed-use district. It's just, the building is the second building south of the OCC parking lot. It's an existing one-story building there that used to be a laundromat. The petitioner did go to the Planning Commission and got site plan approval as well as the zoning board appeals and obtained two variances, one for parking and one for the width of the driveway entering from South Washington. Those plans included removal of the encroachment, 1.33 feet of an encroachment into the right-of-way of South Washington. So those plans had notes indicating that the encroachment was to be removed and that was on their plans and part of their submission was one of the Planning Commission's contingencies. They are proposing to put a second floor on this building for an apartment building. Because of that, it was deemed to be a significant change to the building. So I believe the comment that the architect ended during public comment, if the building stays as it was, we wouldn't have an objection to the encroachment for the one-story building. The fact that you're putting a second floor on it and making significant renovations, both the engineering and the planning divisions are recommending that this encroachment request for a license agreement be denied. The request for that came in after the Planning Commission action as well as after the zoning board action. So if you look at the packet from the Planning Commission that was attached to all of your materials, you'll see notes on those plans that this encroachment is going to be removed. It was only after the fact, when they submitted for building permits, did they now ask for this to remain. There are two resolutions in your commission letter. The first is a recommendation to deny the request, as the staff is recommending. The second is if you choose to approve their request, the second resolution would approve it, authorize a license agreement subject to any final revisions by the city attorney.
Any questions for Mr. Twing? Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Twing, do we know why this happened?
I'm assuming they found the cost probably fairly significant to remove the basement, put in a new foundation and to move it back. I'm assuming it's a cost issue on their end as to why they changed their mind.
So the architect submitted a proposal removing the encroachment and then they started to put their budget together and went and slapped their forehead and said we can't afford that. Is that kind of your conclusion?
That's my conclusion based on the information I have.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Labasser?
I think my answer was, I think my question was just answered. If I'm understanding correctly, the architect acknowledged the encroachment in the plans to the Plan Commission and in those plans represented that they planned to remove the encroachment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it's just now after the fact that they say we're changing our mind, we'd like to keep that encroachment, we might want the license.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perush?
My question for the most part has been answered as well. When I drove by the building and took a look at it, it occurred to me, the foundation issue hadn't occurred to me, the expense, potential expense of reconstructing that part of the foundation, that if that front wall is a load-bearing wall, there'll be significant expense to reconfiguring that from an engineering perspective in the building. And I have no idea whether or not that's the case, but my sense is that given the way the building is designed, it's very possible that that front wall is a load-bearing wall, which means there would have to be significant structural changes to the building, not only in the foundation, but also in the building itself. So that explains, you know, they're reluctant to go forward with their original plan, I would imagine, just given the amount of expense that is probably going to be involved if they have to move it back.
Mr. Gillum?
Erin, commissioners, I was just going to indicate that the owner of the property, petitioner, has joined the meeting. Mr. Sapari, and if the commission is so inclined, you may like to comment. You might be able to answer some of the questions.
Okay, I have Commissioner Labasser first and then we can go to Mr. Sapari. If there are no other comments, Commissioner Labasser?
I was simply going to move that we allow comments from the owner if you believe that's necessary, if you're going to take privilege and have him speak, no need for a motion.
No, I'll take care of privilege since it seems to be agreeable to everyone. So, Mr. Sapari, I see you here, I'm going to unmute you. Okay, there you go. Tell us a little bit more about your situation and your petition for the license agreement.
Thank you for giving the opportunity. As you guys are discussing, it is purely a cost issue. If we have to make the changes, it is going to cost us a lot of money and this project is not going to be viable for me to do.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Sapari?
Uh, no.
All right, no questions for Mr., oh, Commissioner Labasser?
If I'm understanding this correctly, there's just one residential unit planned for the second story, the second floor, and the remainder will be commercial and sometimes retail?
That's correct.
And I also have one more comment. I'm an IT professional. I currently live in Rochester, but I plan to, you know, if everything works out with my contracts, I plan to move into Royal Oak, probably, you know, use the first floor as my office and the apartment as my residence. Again, this can change depending on how my business, you know, type of contracts I get.
Thank you, Mr. Sapari. Any other questions? Okay, I see Commissioner Labasser is raising his hand again, Commissioner Labasser?
Just wanted to get a better understanding of engineering and planning's objections, if there was, whether it was mayor setting precedent or if there was other concerns that led them to recommend not approving the licensing agreement.
Generally speaking, you'll see that the administration and staff are going to recommend against encroachments into the public right-of-way. Those that have existed or have preexisted, we obviously have allowed to continue and maintain. When people are doing renovations or small renovations to the buildings, we try to get license agreements with them so that there's an acknowledgement that their encroachment is there. In this particular case, given the addition of an entire second floor to the building, it was our position that that was a significant enough- it was our position that that was a significant enough rework or to development on it to, again, recommend denial. But in some other cases where we've just seen like the renovation of the first floor, we haven't taken it out. So we're pretty consistent in recommending denial and leaving it up to the commission to decide whether that encroachment is something you're willing to live with. It is a little over a foot, it's not a huge encroachment. We do have encroachments in the CBD of basements that are six and seven feet out into the sidewalk. So it's not abnormal in town, being an old community. But when we get the opportunity to have one removed, we would generally recommend that it be removed.
Commissioner Perush? Hold on, Commissioner Perush, my unmute button is not working. Hold on one second. One second, Commissioner Perush. There we go, okay.
I had done it, I apologize, I had muted. As I recall from Mr. Sapari's phone message, he indicated that there were parking lots to other facilities that are adjacent to this building that also seem to be encroaching into the public right-of-way about the same amount of space as his building is. Did I hear that correctly? I think Mr. Sapari is muted.
Let me unmute Mr. Sapari. If I can.
I believe his architect left a message, which was Chester? I don't.
Oh, okay, that could very well be.
Yeah, I can't unmute for whatever reason Mr. Sapari at the moment, clicking on it, but maybe, Ms. Wang, or if you're on.
I'm sorry.
There we go, can it? We can hear you now.
Okay, so, sorry, what was the question?
Mr. Sapari, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, now.
It looked to me, when I was down there, it looked like there were adjacent parking lots, and I didn't look at the buildings, but at least adjacent parking lots to your facility that also appeared, just by eyeballing it, to be encroaching a little bit into the public right-of-way. Is that your sense as well, or is yours sticking out a little bit individually?
I really don't know.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas?
Following up on Commissioner Perush's question, Mr. Twain, the parking lot on the north side of this building obviously is one of the ones that is encroaching into the public right-of-way. Would taking that parking lot back to the property line, looks like they would lose a parking space, is that going to affect the parking requirement?
For this building, no.
So is the parking on the north side of the building for the adjacent property?
Yes, the parking for this building is to the east towards the alley.
Okay, so, but my question remains, if we make, so no change is proposed to that parking lot since it's owned by the adjacent, the northern building?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Dubach?
If Mr. Twain can elaborate a little bit. I understand the technical aspect of this, but, you know, so we have the authority to enter a new agreement in the case where, you know, there's no threat of public safety or finances or our own operations. So in this case, I'm not seeing any, is there a public safety issue, a financial issue, an operations issue for us to grant this license?
Not at the present time. That doesn't mean in the future, at some point, you wouldn't want part of the right-of-way for another use, but at the present time, no.
I understand that that's kind of what we're weighing, but in general, it seems like a pretty limited amount of space, and I don't see any red flags here. And I get that the department, that your position is generally just to recommend denial, and then we decide, so.
Well, generally speaking, we would recommend denial of any encroachment in the right-of-way. You have several encroachments that we bring forward to you that are dealt with under license agreements that give you the ability to remove those. We have license agreements for refuge enclosures, walls, a variety of things that staff would bring to you and support, because if we need to remove them, they're easily removed. And in cases where, as I said earlier, if it's a simple renovation of the first floor, we probably would simply have a license agreement to acknowledge that that's there because the building's there. I think in this particular case, again, we're looking at it as there's a significant amount of investment to put the second floor on, and that actually impacts the amount of the encroachment, rather than being a one-story building now, it's now going to be two, two and a half with the roof line on it. So the encroachment is actually getting, it's not coming further out, but the actual amount of the encroachment in terms of mass is bigger, because now it's two stories versus one. I think that's why we would recommend against this versus some other cases where we wouldn't take such a stronger position.
Commissioner Mason? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Dubach, and then Commissioner Mason.
And I guess that's what I'm trying to tease out, what, so it being an encroachment on the additional story, what impact does that have on us? On our operations, on our costs?
Well, generally, under a license agreement, it gives you the right to order it removed.
Right.
So rather than ordering a one-story building or a portion of it removed, you're now ordering two. And whether that's a cost, or who's going to pony for that may be an issue for the legal department down the road, so.
I was trying to understand what would be like an example of why we would need that.
There are occasions where you need, if you were trying to do something to the width of a roadway, and again, I don't have a particular one in Washington, Washington's a fairly wide roadway. But if you needed it for a bigger storm sewer line or a water line, we have a lot of utilities underground that, as you let encroachments come in, takes away your ability to have public infrastructure in there, whether it's fiber optic lines or power lines. And I will acknowledge, a foot doesn't seem like a lot, but from a staff standpoint, where do we draw the line? At a foot, five feet? And so we've taken this position, and that's why we gave you really two resolutions. If you want, if the commission feels it's not a burden, then I would suggest you grant the license agreement and move forward.
And that's what I'm trying to assess, the likelihood that would be a burden, if that's helpful.
Commissioner Mason?
So that in piece that Commissioner Dubach just asked at the end was what I was going to ask. It looks like there are, it's quite a bit of space in that right-of-way already, and then it's a wide street, like it looks like there's, you know, three sidewalk squares of space leading up to that, and then we're missing a foot. So I was going to ask as well, what kind of a use would we need, a wider space? That additional would be something we could use? And I think I heard the answer at the end, like we just don't know about the future, about utility needs and why you did throw, et cetera.
Correct.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Twain has put forward in the planning department two different motions in front of us. I see Commissioner Douglas, one second, let me unmute you. Maybe I've unmuted yourself, maybe I've lost all power?
I'm muting myself. I appreciate the staff's diligence on this, I, this is what I expect our staff to do, to use common sense, as before, and allow smaller renovations to go ahead without changing their right-of-way. But I think this is cool enough, I think sidewalk there is generous enough that I'm inclined to, and will move to the report of the second resolution that the city commission approve a license agreement with 915 South.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, I see a second by Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Okay, discussion, Commissioner Douglas?
I said my piece.
Anybody else, Commissioner Perush?
No, I think everything that needs to be said has been said. I don't think it's a major issue to grant this.
All right, well, I'm going to call for the vote with this one, given the fact that it is a property rights issue. I am going to do a roll call vote on this one. Just, I'm going to go down as I see the names appearing on my screen. So we'll begin a call for the vote, Commissioner Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Perush?
Aye.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Aye.
Commissioner Dubach?
Aye.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, the motion to approve the license agreement passes. Thank you, Mr. Sapari, for joining in, and have a good evening, sir. Okay, Mr. Kirby, is Mr. Kirby back?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm here. I apologize for.
All right, well, no worries, no worries. I think what you're trying to do is just underscore the emphasis for this IT contract that's item number eight, right?
Actually, with this being our first virtual meeting, I wanted to make sure I watched it on several devices, and there's a little bit of a lag for the live stream, so I was about 90 seconds behind.
Okay. Well, no worries, we got you now, so the floor is yours, sir.
Before you, is a proposal for a contract with Marko Technologies for giving us one year of maintenance and support on the plotter that we use in the engineering department. Plotter was originally purchased from Governor Solutions, and with that purchase, we had a contract with them for annual support and maintenance that was renewed each year. They were purchased in this last year by Marko Technologies, so with that comes a new contract with Marko Technologies that needed to be brought to you for approval. What it provides is the ability for us to call them, have them come out, do routine maintenance on the device, and if there's any trouble with it, they come out and do troubleshooting and repair.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Kirby? Okay, I don't see any questions. We have anyone who wishes to make a motion? Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of this recommendation.
A motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas, so a motion by Commissioner Perush, second by Commissioner Douglas, discussion? With no discussion, I'll also call for a roll call vote on this. It's probably the safest way to move forward, just in case there are any other technical difficulties. We'll start in reverse order this time. Commissioner Gibbs? I guess I'll start in reverse order, I vote aye. Commissioner Gibbs?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Dubach? Commissioner Lavasser?
Aye.
Commissioner Mason?
Aye.
Commissioner Perush?
Aye.
Commissioner Douglas?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes, six or seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Kirby, and, you know, good luck with the contract. Okay, this brings us to item number 10 on tonight's agenda, planning commission recommendations, zoning ordinance text amendments, wireless communication facilities, second reading, Mr. Twain?
This item was before the city commission on January 13th for a first reading. I believe, if you recall, at that meeting, the commission received some communication from Verizon Wireless representative, and you asked staff to go back and review their commentary and bring this back when we were ready to do that. But we have done that, we finally had the opportunity to, I guess, get clarity on what Verizon's issues were. I think there was some confusion on their end at what we were dealing with, was the taller towers in most of the ordinance provisions, where they were primarily talking about the distributed antenna systems, or the DASs, or the small cells. So what we did was, in reply to them, was broke those out and added language to address small cells versus what was in the, primarily in the ordinance, what you would see as the taller cell tower-type operations. You did have a recommendation of approval from the planning commission for these text amendments, other than those that we added in regards to Verizon, but I think those are minor, just for clarity and cleanup, and pretty much they followed either the state or federal law wording. So there wasn't really much there, we could have just referenced those. What I will remind you also is the primary purpose of this was to allow the planning commissions some clear discretion in regards to setback requirements and tower design for those types of towers. Primarily, the planning commission could modify the setback from a right-of-way or residential area if the petitioner provided adequate engineering documentation that the tower would either fall basically onto itself or into a smaller radius. The planning commission could use that smaller radius rather than the actual height of the tower. In addition to that, those primary reasons for bringing it forward, we did clean up some language and address some of the other recent federal and state regulations. We also removed some unnecessary or repetitive language. That's really the text amendment that's in front of you, in your packet or online, you should see, there's an attachment one, which has all the highlights of what was changed and struck out, and then there is a clear version, or a clean version, that follows that. If the commission is ready to approve this on second reading, there is a resolution recommended in the commission letter.
Questions for Mr. Twain? I don't see any questions from Mr. Twain. Do I see any hands to make a motion? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, Mayor, I move approval of the resolution as submitted by staff for the ordinance as proposed.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second, I see a second, I see the hand raised digitally by Commissioner Perush, did I capture that correctly?
Yes, you did, I will second this motion.
Discussion on the motion. All right, we'll start with a roll call vote again. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Perush?
Aye.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Lavasser?
Nay.
Mr. Dubach?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbs?
Nay.
And I vote aye. All right, five to two, the motion passes. All right, this brings us to the last agenda item of this evening, which is the request to schedule special city commission closed session meeting. Mr. Gillum?
Mayor and city commissioners, you'll remember that two weeks ago tonight, the commission voted unanimously to offer, a conditional offer of employment to Paul Brake, to have him serve as our next city manager. Since that time, I've had two lengthy, roughly an hour-long phone conversations with Mr. Brake. We've exchanged a number of emails, and I've provided him with a draft of an employment agreement, which we discussed most recently on Friday morning. I think we're very close to having an agreement as to the terms of a contract that I can bring to the city commission for formal approval. There are a couple of open issues that are out there, and I would like to have the opportunity to discuss with you, to review my recommendations, to get your thoughts. to review my recommendations, to get your thoughts, in hopes of potentially having an agreement nailed down that we could actually bring back to the commission for formal approval at your next meeting on April thirteenth. So, um, those, uh, type of details would be appropriate for us to discuss in a closed session. I would ask that you consider scheduling a closed session for later on this week. Uh, given the notice requirements under the Open Meetings Act, and also under the executive order the governor has issued allowing us to conduct meetings remotely like this, um, I would ask that you think about setting the meeting possibly for Wednesday or Thursday of this week, depending what everybody's availability is. Um, we're not in a position to do this tomorrow night. We wouldn't be able to get the advance notice required under the executive order out in time, I don't think. So, then if you could, uh, take a look at your schedules, give that some thought, um, and consider scheduling a special meeting for later on this week. Again, to be clear, we would have to open in a regular meeting. We would have to be providing public comment. We would then move into closed session, not anticipating any coming back out of closed session to take any action other than adjourn. But again, the earliest we could do that this week would be Wednesday, closed.
Anybody wanna make the first move to put a preference out there? I see, I see, um, Commissioner Perush raising her hand.
Um, I have another, um, board meeting on Wednesday, but it doesn't start until seven thirty. It's the Roeloop Symphony Board. We're trying to figure out how to fade, uh, the season as well as the organization, given the circumstances, and I'm the secretary of the board. But it doesn't meet until seven thirty, so I could handle an earlier meeting on that evening.
So, we have, Commissioner Perush can do something Wednesday or Thursday, but on Wednesday, something earlier, six-ish or something like that, correct?
Yes.
Anybody have like a day that they can't do out of Wednesday or Thursday that they're really have an issue with around the six o'clock timeframe, either Wednesday or Thursday? See a lot of smiles. Obviously, uh, there's no bowling league or, you know, anything like that going on. Um, so, um, but we all do have Skype meetings and things like that for work and, uh, et cetera. Um, okay, so, um, you know, whoever wants to make a motion to set up a, a meeting and a time, you know, we're all ears. Commissioner Macy?
Uh, if Commissioner, or Commissioner, if Mr. Gillum thinks that an hour or an hour and a half is enough time, then I'll move that we meet on, for closed session after an open session public comment on Wednesday at six P.M.
Okay, we have Wednesday at six P.M. There's a motion of a second by Commissioner LaVassar. Um, discussion? Um, Commissioner Perush, you had your, okay, you took your hand down. Commissioner LaVassar, any discussion? Mr. Macy, any discussion? Okay, um, Mr. Gillum?
Um, thank you. I was just gonna indicate that, uh, I will get information out to you by email before we meet on Wednesday night. I'll give you, uh, basically a summary of where we're at and a copy of the draft of the agreement, so we should be able to hit the ground running, I would think. Um, if we start at six, we should be done in plenty of time for Commissioner Perush to get to the meeting that she needs to get to.
Okay. Okay. All right, um, oh, Commissioner Perush?
I, I was just gonna say that I'm not going to go anywhere physically for the second meeting. I'll just pick which one dial-in number for another dial-in number.
We'll give you plenty of time to make a call.
I may need it, but, but I'm, I'm not, I'm gonna be in the same chair.
You just need thirty seconds.
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, I'll call for the vote. I'm gonna start in reverse order this time. Uh, Commissioner Gibbs?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that an aye?
Aye.
Aye, yeah, aye, okay. Um, Commissioner Duba?
Aye.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Aye.
Mr. Macy? Mr. Perush?
Aye.
Commissioner Douglas?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, unanimous. We have six o'clock Wednesday. Uh, Mr. Gillum and team will get that scheduled and notified. Uh, we'll open with public comment, I imagine. We'll do public comment similarly as we have done with this meeting. Open up the telephone line, uh, but those details, we'll, we'll receive that recommendation from staff, uh, and then we'll move forward with the closed session. Um, and then, um, you know, afterwards, we'll reopen to a public meeting, so. All right, um, is there anything else anyone wishes to discuss tonight? If not, uh, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner LaVassar?
Move to adjourn.
I second that.
We've seconded by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion on the motion to adjourn. All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. We'll start in, um, top order. Uh, Commissioner Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Perush?
Aye, and thank you, staff, for this, this wonderful arrangement. It's terrific. Great job.
Mr. Macy?
Aye.
Mr. LaVassar?
Aye.
Mr. Duba?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbs?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye, and I will give props to staff, um, for our first digital meeting on the fly without even being able to meet in person to figure it all out. They did an excellent job, and this went relatively smoothly. Although I'm not surprised, we have very talented people working in the city of Roeloop, so many thanks. So, the motion does pass, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in tonight, and, uh, we'll see you Wednesday night, uh, for the, uh, closed session meeting that's scheduled. Thank you.